Good evening, I'm gonna call this meeting of the Cartersville City Council to order. As many people know, or some may not know, this week is the, this Saturday is the opening of Little League, Little League Opening Day. So in celebration of that, I've asked some members of Cartersville Little League to, to lead us in the Little League pledge this morning, or this evening, as our invocation, and then also lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Those doing that for us this evening are Emery Weaver, Brant Rutledge, Brooks Fulton, Drake Bailey, Micah Mitchum, and Griffin McGill. If you will please stand for our invocation and pledge.
I trust in God, I love my country, I respect its laws. I will play fair, strive and win, but win or lose, I'll always do my best.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you gentlemen. Now here, I'm gonna say something, hey guys, I'm gonna say something to you that your teachers would never tell you in class. You're certainly welcome to stay, but if you don't wanna stay, that's, that's good, you can go. Alright? Alright, we're gonna go ahead and get started. Thank you all for letting it be here. Thank you Jenny for setting that up for us. We'll see y'all Saturday. Our first order of business tonight is the approval of our council meeting minutes from February 20th. And council, you've had these one advances, tonight had the opportunity to look them over. Have they been alright?
No roll call.
Oh, thank you there Calvin, I appreciate that. Ms. Olmer, I've totally forgot to ask you to call a roll. Calvin has straightened me out on that, so if you would please call the roll.
I'd have been okay, but thank you. Carrie Hodge, Ward 1.
Here.
Jay Steph, Ward 2.
Here.
Kerry Roth, Ward 3.
Here.
Calvin Cooley, Ward 4.
Here.
Gary Fox, Ward 5.
Here.
Pat Friend, Ward 6.
Here.
Thank you, everyone involved in keeping me on the straight and narrow. We are in the process of approving our council meeting minutes from February 20th. You've had an opportunity to look this over, council, and make any adjustments that might be needed, if there are any. Now would be the time to make those, and if not, a motion to approve would be in order.
Motion to approve the minutes.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. First item on the agenda tonight is an alarm registration ordinance, and since our first reading, police chief has said that they've used, oh, I'm sorry, you're up here to tell us all about it. Go ahead, chief.
Um, in reference to that ordinance, I don't think it's necessary. We were able to work with our IT department and finance department to obtain the information that we were trying to obtain with the ordinance, so I'd, I'm respectfully requesting that you guys pull that ordinance or vote no, or whatever is necessary to do.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Chairman, entertain a motion to remove that item from the agenda.
Make a motion, remove that item from the agenda.
So a second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Item is removed, thank you.
I'll figure that out.
Mr. Manino, if you'll get us started on the second item, the food truck ordinance.
Thank you mayor and council, as you noticed, well, I'm not sure if you noted, this is the second reading. First reading, we didn't have a lot of input. Since that first reading, now, we have received a lot of grade input, and definitely some modifications are necessary to this particular ordinance. We are supportive of tabling this ordinance in order to make said modifications.
Okay, thank you. Questions for Randy at this time? Thank you sir. I will, out of respect for those that have been here, and a thank you to those that reached out with your concerns, I would like to open this up for public hearing, so that those of you that have made time to be here could express those concerns to council, so we get those on the record, and so that staff can hear those concerns, so they can address those before we move forward with this ordinance. So at this time, I'm gonna open up before, and anybody wishing to make public comment relative to the food truck ordinance may step forward and do so at this time. And anybody that does step forward and speak, if you would please, your name and your address for our clerk, so we can include that in our minutes.
I suppose I will be the first one, since I'm used to speaking in public. My name is Melody Daring, and my husband, Michael, and I own Darren's Invinciter, and we had owned Mike's place up here in town, too. I heard about this, we do not have a food truck at the moment, but we are probably gonna get one in the next year, so this is of concern to us, and it's also of concern because we've been the food service business for quite a while. And I've got some specifics on this that have concerns. I would like to congratulate the council on trying to tackle this. It is something that is, food trucks are something that do need to be regulated, and so I appreciate the effort, but it does need quite a bit of work. One of the misconceptions, and some of the other food vendors here may amplify that a little bit, is that people in the food service business make a lot of money. And so therefore, they can afford extra regulations and requirements and all those kinds of things. I know anytime, not speaking directly to this council, but anytime any council or commission or, and today wants money, the first thing they do is up the food service vendors permits, and you even look at festivals for that. Regular vendors pay a hundred and fifty dollars, many times for food spaces, with food vendors it's two fifty to three hundred. And with temporary food service, which we will talk about briefly, just to let you know how that goes, whenever we've done a festival, which we haven't done in a number of years for this, about what I'm about to share with you, anytime you do a festival, or any kind of thing outdoor, like on a temporary basis, it costs minimum, minimum eighteen hundred a day, or eighteen hundred for a day and a half, I would say, if you go half a day on Sunday, to run a temporary spot. So if you don't make eighteen hundred dollars at an art festival, or one of these festivals, then you are not making your money. And a lot of times, if you look at the festivals, they'll have four or five barbecue people, and if they have more than one or two barbecue people, I can guarantee you they're walking away without making money, because that's too many people for the crowds. So that's just a little background information of where we're coming from. An ordinance like this will undoubtedly put some people out of business here, even if they don't have a food truck to some degree, because if they plan on getting one, or more licensing, it could cause some problems. Okay, now I'm gonna get to a couple of the specific issues, and I'm gonna move as quickly as I can. An Article D, it talks about the sirens and sounds, that would put all ice cream trucks and shaved ice trucks out of business, because it was, in essence, it's saying you can't go through a neighborhood with any kind of music or sound or anything. And how do you think kids are gonna come out and know it's Ice Cream Man, or Ice Cream Person, I should say to be correct, if they don't hear a sound? So that would put all those types of things going to neighborhoods out of business. And to me, that's, that's un-American. I like my ice cream trucks, that's un-American. Then an E with licensing, there's a lot in this that's not clarified, and because it's not clarified, it's to me burdensome. It talks about licenses, but it doesn't talk about the whole year. It talks about just licenses for temporary food service operations, or for food truck operations, and it doesn't say if it's for the year, it doesn't say if it's per event. It would be wrong, completely wrong, if it's per event, because that would make it unprofitable at all to do any kind of food truck operations, because it wouldn't make enough to cover all the expenses in one day. So that needs to be clarified. And then also, the, it seems to be over burdensome in the licensing. For instance, if you have, under county health department rules, if you have a food truck, you're supposed to have a base of operations. You can't just have food truck, which most people, that's why everybody started food trucks, because they didn't have to have a restaurant, they can have food truck. Now they said, well, you gotta have a base of operations to prepare your food, to put in the food truck, to run the food truck. So if you have a base of operations in the city of Cartersville, you're going to have a business license already. So then why do you have to have an additional license to have a food truck? That's like double taxation and double fees. So that needs to be looked at. And the other question I have, and this is something that also is not specified in this ordinance, and this would affect us, because we would likely have our base of operations outside the city, is that if you had a business license somewhere else, and this happens a lot with food trucks, they have a business license in Akron, or Canton, wherever, and they come here. So how's that gonna be regulated to have a license here? And that's also double taxation, because they have a valid business license, and perhaps even a food truck license somewhere else. So that would affect business here, because they do come in a lot for temporary food service operations, and they come in, I know Drown Valley's doing some things, they're mostly local food vendors, but still, out of county, out of city people do come in. We're in the county, for instance. And our base of operations will be likely somewhere either outside the city for sure, and probably outside Bartow County, so that would affect us. The other thing is the fingerprinting and all that, and I'm gonna take it for what is nonsense, okay? If you have a business license, a business license does not require to have a criminal background check. So what is the difference in have a store business license and requiring a food truck license, that now is requiring background checks? And you can say, well, it's the driving, but you have a driver's license. So if you have a valid driver's license, that would indicate that you can drive a vehicle in the city of Cartersville. So, and if you have insurance, which I'm all for requiring the insurance, there's some things I'm for, I'm for requiring the insurance and those kinds of things. But if you have insurance, then, and you can drive in the city of Cartersville, why then are you requiring fingerprinted background checks on this? And the other problem I have is the term moral turpitude, because it's very discretionary. Who's decide, I know they have some things with traffic violations and so forth, but that's not specific, and it called moral turpitude, who's gonna decide that? That's a problem, because, and let's, I'm gonna be quite frank, in some respects, Cartersville is somewhat of a little clique-ish community, and there could be somebody, they didn't like somebody, and they said moral turpitude, and not seeing that would happen, but it could. And you don't want any gray areas that might put the city at a liability in case there is something like that going on, not seeing there is, I'm just saying in case. The, the other thing I have is enforcement, and this is really my biggest issue. It says in there who's gonna enforce it, but really, most city employees only work nine to five, or eight to four. So, and this is the problem with the county health department, and this is, you could talk this about any national issue, that this is going to impact those of us who try to obey the law, but not have a direct impact on those who are operating illegally. Because if you don't go check at night, if you don't go check on weekends, that's when illegal operations are happening. The, the ones that operate during the day are the ones that are pretty much legal, and they might have a small violation, like they might not have it on, on the front of their food truck, or some little, you know, something. But they're why called the low hanging fruit, and like with us, we were open, we had a restaurant, we were open every day, so it was very easy for someone to come in, the health department, come in, "I'm gonna check you." Or the code enforcement, "I'm gonna check you," because we were open, we were there, we were visible. But yet, there were people parking on curbs on the weekends, selling hot dogs, and I would check, they had no business license, no liability insurance, no health department certification, and that, but yet, they wouldn't get caught, because they were out on weekends. And the city, the city, county, and county health department don't work weekends. So that, to me, that's uneven enforcement, and that's probably one of my number one, if, I guess if you call it peeves, about an ordinance like this, is that it really hurts those of us who are trying to operate a legal operation, but then those who are illegal get away with everything, and you can't, they're the ones that are causing the problems, and yet you can't enforce against them. So, again, good first, good first effort, I'm not totally against the idea of some regulation, but it really needs to be clarified and tweaked and analyzed a little bit more, and you probably would benefit by having some of these folks that are involved in food service to, which we're here tonight, but to actually be involved in the final draft, to see how it affects them, or at least offer advice, or look before you draft it finally, because we know more about that business than, I don't think any of you have ever had that business, I don't know, but we probably know more about that than, than you guys do, you could probably benefit for a little bit of, this is how it's going to affect us. So I'm, now, I think there's other people that wanna speak, so thank you, I appreciate it. I hope you take these into consideration. Thanks.
Thank you.
How's everybody doing tonight?
Good. Name and address for our minutes, please sir.
Fifty Oak Ridge Drive. And so I'm the owner of the Mule House Woodfire Pizza Kitchen, best pizza you'll ever have. Just a few things, just-
And Zach, I know your name, a lot of people do.
Nick.
Nick. I know your name, Nick.
Yes, my brother's Zach.
I know that.
Nick, yeah.
Anyway, let me put my foot in my mouth further, she needs your name for the minutes. It's Nick Philber. Sorry about that.
Nick Philber, yep. Alright, so a few things, and I think there's a, kind of a few things in the ordinance, just a few kinda notes that I put on, that is, kinda seems a little bit unnecessary, and I also have a question, if I can kinda pose a question to the council, I don't know if I can do that, but, so, I think like, things like reverse, like the reversing beeping alarm, like, you wouldn't, that's not necessary, I'm like a flatbed trailer for like Jimmy's Hay Company, so that's gonna be a bigger trailer probably pulling than, it talks about you have to have a reverse gear when you reverse it, the alarm turns on. Time to sell foods only at certain times, so that's a pretty wide band, but I think the thing that would make me nervous is, is that in years to come, like just thoughts of, there's some really cool like coffee, some coffee food trucks that can come into town, and just things like that, and so I think like, when you start to band out certain times, then I think what would keep that band from maybe going shorter? The next thing I would think, food preparation on a residential site, so I understand, I think the, what you're trying to keep, so, like we just talked about with like a base of operation, so, for my base of operation, for example, we have, we follow all Department of Health, we have a base of operations at our house. We can't prepare any food, I can't prepare any food in my house, I have a mop sink designated area for cleaning of my food truck in my house. But things like, so I make my pizza dough sometimes in my trailer, so all the work is done on my trailer, but that's in my driveway. And, and so that, that would just be my thoughts on that, of like, alright, can trucks doing prep work, if you don't have, like, I don't have a, a commercial kitchen, and there's a lack of, like a, any kind of commissary space, or anything in Cartersville that food trucks could use. And so that would kinda be my, those are just kinda my few thoughts, but I guess my question for the council is, is what's kinda the, what's been the kinda the prompt, if y'all could, if anyone could, hey, we really need to figure out something with food trucks?
Our code violation department has had several issues involving food trucks, especially with those in parking in residential structures, who have been dumping grease illegally into the storm sewers of the city, and other things like that. So based upon, and that's the main.
Okay.
That's the big issue that came out of it, I mean, there are other minor ones, but that's the main one. So based upon that, they asked our office to look at the surrounding communities and compare their food truck ordinances, and come up with a draft for them to present to council.
So they're not using like, they have these grease latent vapors, and they're not having like, they don't have any kinda grease trap?
No, they're just taking the grease right out of the truck and dumping it right in the storm sewer. And we've had, I don't know, Ms. Fritz can tell you, but I think at least three or four in the last year, year of doing that.
Okay, okay. Bye. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you, Nick. Sorry about calling your brother's name, I'm sure, I'm sure you, I'm sure it's not the first time. Anybody else wishing to step forward and speak on this is welcome to do so at this And once again, your name and your address for our clerk, please, so we could have it in our notes.
Hi, I'm Ally Be, or Ally Lyons, most of you know me that way. I am at eleven Brooklands, I'm sorry, I'm losing my voice a little bit. So I had sent out an email, and I do believe it got forwarded to most of you, and a lot of things were said, but I just wanna go over a couple of them. One of the biggest things for us is parking it at our house, which was touched on, so while we do have a restaurant, we have nowhere to park our food truck at our restaurant, so we are allowed to park it at our house. And the biggest question I posed, and now I understand that it's more of a grease issue, and that is something that's kind of regulated with the Department of Health, so when we set up the food truck, we had to tell them like where are we disposing of our grease. So I would imagine when these food trucks are being set up with the Department of Health, they should be asking that same question to them. So not being able to park it at our house is a huge deal, because that's, again, where we clean ours as well, I know Nick said the same thing. We don't do any of our preparation at our house, we do all of it at the restaurant, but it's just, it's a convenience thing, I think for everybody in this business, is we, our days are so jam-packed, and just having, for us, we would have to park it on the north end of town in like a storage space, so not only does that cost money, but to drive back and forth, back and forth, we purchased our house a mile from our restaurant, just so doing those back and forth trips, which we do twenty times plus a day, is quicker, easier. And the other thing is, is that, sorry, I lost my train of thought, with parking it at our house, my question was, people park their RVs there, people park their boats there, so if it's kind of like an eyesore type of thing, if people are complaining about like, well, we don't want, you know, advertised food trucks in our neighborhood, that's why we moved out of HOA neighborhood. So I don't know if that's maybe been one of the complaints that has come up, so that was kinda my point, if that had been one of the issues. Some of the other things I had said, the timing thing, doing the limited hours, I wasn't sure if that pertained to private events as well. We get a lot of private events, and telling somebody, oh, well, we have to close at eleven o'clock, if they wanna commission us privately, we should be able to, you know, do whatever we want, so I didn't know if that's something you guys could specify, that if it's a city event, that maybe there's a time restraint, and a lot of these city events do end at nine or something, but maybe saying that if it's a privately commissioned event, that, you know, it's up to our jurisdiction. Let's see, residential, okay, so the no alcoholic beverages, that one I had asked, so when there's downtown events, I know a couple of people are allowed to come in and sell alcohol. Now, not allowing food trucks, if they don't have an alcohol license, I understand that, but we, as a food truck and a business, we have an alcohol license. So if we're in a zoned event, I feel like if there's other food trucks selling alcohol, these breweries that come in, that are from like Kennesaw, Marietta, they come in and serve their beer out of their little trucks, and I, I don't know why we shouldn't be allowed to, that if somebody can sell it out of a tent, we should most definitely be able to sell it out of a food truck. The fee that had been mentioned, is it a double fee, does our peddler's license, is that, like, what is that then, if we're paying this new fee, does that kinda get pushed to the side, is this gonna cover all that same thing? I think besides that, though, everything else had been mentioned, but I just feel like a lot of the things that have been brought up are things that are already enforced by the Department of Health, and so maybe there's a missing link, is what I felt like reading through it, and that maybe there could just be a better bridge. So with the grease, we, we don't have to keep a log, but like I said, they have to know where our grease trap is, and they have to know that it's being maintained, we have to have our mop sink, we have certain things that are required by the Department of Health, and so a lot of the little things in here, maybe it's more so a concern that they need to address, rather than you guys enforcing this ordinance upon everybody, like, maybe they need to step it up a little bit. They're, they're, I know they're busy and stuff, and, and we've been told by them a lot that they're very behind in short-staffed and stuff, but I think the grease thing could definitely be an issue that they could handle privately, rather than telling food trucks that they can't park at their house anymore, 'cause I know that would affect a lot of us. And then with the backup, the mirrors and the backup sensor, I mean, if somebody has a driver's license, again, if they, if they're taking that liability of driving that vehicle, why do they have to have a backup sensor? You know, what, we don't make every RV or every trailer driving down the road have a backup sensor, so I understand that it's a liability thing, but if we're doing that insurance, if we have insurance and we have our driver's license, so it should, it should all be, all those boxes seem checked to me, but of course, so, if, if we can help in any way, we're happy to give our input. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, just to answer a couple of her questions that she asked, with respect to the peddler's license, this would take the place of it?
Okay.
So you wouldn't be double billed, if it's adopted? With respect to being able to sell as part of a festival, the only people that can sell alcohol as part of the festival are those that are permitted through the festival. If your food truck is permitted through that festival, then of course you can provide alcohol through that festival. If your food truck is not permitted through that festival to authorize as being able to sell alcohol, then you would not be able to, because you're operating under the festival's license to sell alcohol for the food truck, not your individual license. And food trucks themselves are not allowed to have an alcohol license in the city to sell, period. You know, they sell through someone else's license.
But does our business license and our alcohol license, like, of course, we're not gonna sell alcohol on, on the side of the street or anything like that, but just the fact that we pay so much to have those licenses, and our, our business is one big business, and so-
But, but basically, if you're at a downtown city of Cartersville festival, that alcohol is allowed at, you're there because, in this case, the DDA has invited you and made you part of it. Your alcohol privileges to serve from your beer truck, or from your tent, or from anywhere else are from the DDA.
Okay.
Not from your restaurant, or your establishment, if you're there as a food truck. Now, there are cases where the restaurants themselves can have their own stands and serve, and-
Yeah.
That's a different thing, but for the food truck, any food truck at a downtown festival is selling alcohol through the DDA's license, not whatever license their parent restaurant may have, or anybody else.
Okay, so we could sell from the business side, like, we could set up a stand in front of the business, essentially, but not sell out of the food truck?
You potentially could sell out of the food truck if that was made part of the application-
Okay.
-from the, the DDA that was approved by Planning and Development.
Okay.
You know, they put in where you can sell alcohol from as part of their application.
Alright.
Now, if you're actually selling alcohol in a food truck, you could trigger a whole bunch of other regulatory requirements that, you know, through the health department or whomever, that you might have to address separately.
Okay.
And, you know, Cartersville isn't unique in having food truck ordinances, as part of this, I did a little survey, and I didn't really go into a lot of great detail, but I found at least twenty communities within a sixty mile radius that have food truck ordinances.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, perfect, thank you.
Thank you. I, just, so, if I rented out a, an area in the city, and I called Table 20, and I wanted them to cater my dinner, because they have a beer, liquor, wine, distilled spirits, whatever it is, license, would they be able to serve from their truck at my event that I'm paying them to cater?
No, because those are two separate licenses, or actually, in this, in this particular example you're giving, you're talking about three licenses. A place has their general business license, which is their, their restaurant in this case. They also have an alcohol license to allow the sale of alcohol at their restaurant. Then on top of that, they also probably have a caterer's license, so they can sell at catered events. Then they have a separate license for the food truck. The food truck is not covered by the alcohol license or the caterer's license. Now, that doesn't mean they, they cannot make arrangements for the food truck to be covered by the caterer's license, but as of right now, they are two separate, they're separate entities. So what they would do is, they, they may be selling you food from the food truck as part of the caterer's license, but they would also be selling you alcohol at a tent or somewhere else on the property, or whatever they want it to, from their caterer's license, not from their food truck license. I mean, you know, it's like-
It just couldn't be passed, it just couldn't be passed out through the food truck, for technicality.
Yep, basically, yes.
But if we were to decide we were gonna stick some parts of this food truck information up under the caterer's license, we could probably skip over some steps.
You could, yes, very well. Or they could, as part of their caterer's license, apply and say that, as part of our caterer's operations, we have a food truck, and we would like to serve alcohol out of that food truck at privately catered events. And then if they meet all the requirements of the ordinance, that would either be approved or denied, you know, based on that.
And I think, kinda to mix a few of these together, I guess where my head is, is during alcohol-
If I confused that.
The one, the one thing we don't wanna have, is to use Ms. Daring's example, we don't want- example, we don't want somebody that's got a, a truck that's selling hot, coming from out of town, selling hot dogs on a Saturday, and, and we can now, we throw beer into that too. To me, the, the main focus in wanting to have some type of ordinance is really to protect, I think it was mentioned, the legitimate food truck operators, and that if there are people that are coming from other communities with their food trucks, I think, I think it's, I think you would want the city to know that those people have passed a, their health inspections, and that they are licensed to be doing what they're doing, and not competing unfairly against, against y'all, and so if we know that they're here and they're legitimate operators, then that's, at least that's the part of this that's important to me. That being said, it doesn't really matter what I think at this point. The whole purpose of this hearing is to hear from, uh, the operators that are here tonight, to, if there's any new ground to plow, or something that has not been brought up, so that staff can gather those comments, so we can use them going forward. The other thing I'd like to do, and I'm sorry we're doing this kind of ad hoc, but if, if we could somehow get a, a contact information sheet for those folks that are here, so that the city can, can contact y'all, um, as we move forward with this, um, we'll move slowly and do, I think, for any...
We have the names of our areas, who they're given, but...
Yeah, but I think some people probably have email addresses, or I'm just trying to make it easier and concise on you, if that's okay. Is there anybody else that wishes to share comments at this time? And if, again, if you would, uh, your name and your address for our clerk, please.
Yes, sir.
Darren Capes, Eight Granger Drive, Cartersville, Georgia. I'm afraid that an ordinance like this won't help with illegal dumping of grease. A lot of these operators, I think, get paid for their grease, so if you have someone who's illegally dumping it, just tell them to go to the four-way and drop it off there. I'm sure Pete would appreciate it, because she gets reimbursed when they come to pick it up, but, um, some...
If we knew where they were doing it, and before they backed up, maybe, maybe your neighborhood's water system, then, then we'd be glad to stop it ahead of time.
But, um, I guess some of my concerns would be, I just don't see that, that we need more government in this situation, um, uh, requiring us to, you know, have, I mean, we have insurance, uh, I, I don't think that you guys should tell someone that they should buy insurance, but, uh, and then to list you on their insurance, that just seems, seems to be a, a power reach for me. The, the sounds, I mean, we have speakers on one of our vans, we do use them occasionally. I know ice cream trucks, I mean, you wouldn't know that they were in your neighborhood if you didn't hear them. And I know ice cream trucks come from out of town, um, I know they come out of Atlanta usually, there's a whole fleet of them down there off of, uh, I think it's Chattahoochee, if you, if you go down to Ellsworth, you'll see them. Fingerprints and photographs and licenses in the windows, I mean, this is Cartersville, it's not New York City, you know? I personally don't want my prints in the window of my van, um, you know, we operate a legitimate business here in town, this seems like, again, double taxation, more fees, uh, more requirements, more time, uh, you know, good moral character, like, um, like was stated earlier, that, that's, um, what else? But the name and address of the establishment on the truck and certain letterings, I mean, we, we want our name on the truck, but, but the address, I mean, some of that stuff is just, I think, an overreach. The fact that you couldn't park it overnight in your, in your residential area, we're fortunate now, we can leave our, our vans at our, our shop, but for many, many years, they were in our driveway. So this would, and Table, you know, Chris and Ally live across the street from us, I don't mind that their trailer's there, it's, you know, we don't live in a neighborhood with restrictions for that reason, we wanted some freedom there. So, and the Health Department, um, they put a lot of restrictions on us, we, you know, most of us legitimate operators follow those, and, uh, you're not, I don't think you're gonna be able to police, uh, the folks that come in here from out of town and do things the wrong way. You're just gonna make it harder for us, if we're already doing it right, so...
Thank you for your comments.
Um, Mayor, if I could, there's two people have mentioned it, um, what moral perpetuity is, is, um, basically, it would be murder, aggravated assault, rape, crimes of those nature. That is what moral perpetuity is defined under the law. It's not what you're thinking of, people judging you based on whether you have good or bad morals. It's, it's a, it's a specific definition that covers a range of very serious felonies.
All right, anyone else? Yes, sir, come on forward.
Hey, how are y'all today?
Good.
My name is Abshul, thank y'all for allowing me to stand here. I'm actually the serve safe instructor, I'm one of the few here in Bartow County, so I do a lot of the, uh, serve safes for a lot of the restaurants and stuff, and again, I was, I talk to the Health Department a lot, because, again, they are understaffed, and the biggest thing we did, we brought up was, uh, food trucks, because what, five, six years ago, you didn't have a lot of food trucks here in Bartow County, and the biggest thing was actually bringing them to the festivals and stuff like that, and actually going through the list and reading some of the information on there, you know, they'll talk about like ice cream and not having it and stuff, so the first thing that I thought about it, well, if you're gonna do that, what about the eggs and stuff that you serve? What about like the other six? Because I'm thinking about, you know, health reasons and such like that, so, you know, we, it seems like we single certain things out and whatnot, but, sorry, I am nervous, I don't really, you know, but anyway, so we single, uh, certain people, or certain things out and such, but, you know, when we're looking at it, there's a lot of different things that fall in the category. And, you know, as working with the Health Department, it is a hard thing, because I'm constantly like, you know, wash your hands, when I'm teaching the serve safe classes and stuff, we talk a little bit about like how the food trucks operate and stuff, and, you know, they're, they're playing, uh, going back to their, you know, their base and such. So, you know, they're, they are like, reading on with them, they are sticklers, they're really, really sticklers, because they'll be like, you know, Abshul, what do you think? And in my opinion, there, there's a lot of things that we can work on and stuff, but just looking at the detailed information, you know, on the ordinance, I would accept this more for the City of Atlanta than I would here, because, again, we're such a small community, and we are trying to open up the doors for the surrounding communities and stuff, for them to actually come in, um, and check it out. But, again, we are working on a lot of different things, um, with the Health, where I am, with the Health Department, to, you know, better make sure that we can have, you know, the opportunities.
I have a question for you, sir. Do you, do you do this in other communities as well, or just this community?
Yes, I'll go, yeah, I'll go to the City of Atlanta, and people will come in and ask me, hey, I need you to do a serve safe, and...
So relative to other communities that are our size, the, and again, the whole purpose of having this is to better craft something that isn't gonna run people out of business.
And understandable.
And, so if you can kind of give me some...
Um, the, the biggest thing that, you know, we haven't gotten here yet, which I think in a few, a few, a few more years from now, is, you know, the whole commissary thing, you know, having the trucks come in and just drop their grease off and stuff like that, which, that takes time, because you got the infrastructure and stuff like that. So, I mean, just having a central location where they can check in, maybe once to twice a month, just to make sure that everything falls into place, um, and such, and that's one thing that, you know, I personally have been talking with, with the Health Department, because there, it is, you know, they, there's a lot of things going on when you're dealing with restaurants and stuff like that, so to have a commissary, but their commissary is their truck for right now. And again, I think it is okay for them to actually be able to park their, uh, truck, maybe on the side, on like gravel or something, you know, just, uh, bef, so that we can create something in the future, that we can be able to send those trucks to, where they can get them cleaned properly, make sure that they're serviced the way that they need to. If they need to prep their, or at their restaurant, which, uh, they, they can actually, because they have a, an actual restaurant, but for people who don't, it makes it a little bit more difficult and such. So, yeah, I see a lot of different things in the surrounding counties, where they do actually have commissaries and whatnot. Cobb County, a few years back, when I actually was doing a project at Kennesaw State in my culinary program, we were gonna do a food truck, and we could actually go to churches, use restaurants after hours and stuff like that. Well, you can't do that here, because Health Department says, well, you know, if it's that sole restaurant owner, nobody else can use it, regardless of if they're closed or not. So, you know, the biggest thing, or the biggest thing that we can look forward to in the future, maybe five, seven years down the line, is to actually have a commissary that, you know, they could go to, or like a kitchen they can go to where they can dump grease out, or whatever they need to. So that way, we could protect the integrity of our water mains and stuff like that, because a lot of people also don't know, is when you dump dirty mop water outside, it seeps into the ground, into the water streams, or water mains and stuff like that, and it can contaminate the water and such. So, I mean, there's a lot of different things, and I just think that, you know, reading through the whole documents and stuff like that, I think it's a, it's a bit harsh, um, to say the least, and, you know, over time, I think that we can slowly progress, um, to find something, you know, better, but I think they've been doing what they need to do and such, as far as, you know, me checking out these, because I'm a stickler, like, I go to a lot of restaurants, and, you know, I do a lot of tastings, and I walk through restaurants, and actually, you know, check to make sure that they're following, you know, the things for the Health Department and such. So, I mean, that's just in my opinion, and I saw something else in there that I just didn't think that made sense, and they might have already mentioned it, because I came in late, but, you know, uh, was, you can only sell food and beverage. So, like, what about merchandise and such? Like, say, for example, you wanna...
T-shirts and whatnot?
Exactly, and then, so that was one of my things, too, are we trying to limit what they can sell, or is it more or less like, we want to stick to just food and beverage? Because, again, you know, we're, this is, for me, for food trucks, I think it's an opportunity for people to actually grow, so they can actually go into a brick and mortar if they want to. Or it's more of a convenience for other people, because they get to go to Atlanta, or they get to go to Chattanooga. I mean, coastal ma, or the, I can't even think, uh, the King of Pops, you know, they started doing the peddler's license and stuff, like, and they just grew, grew, grew. Now you can go to Ponce and actually buy your King of Pops and stuff. So, I mean, it's like we're trying to hinder people from growing and exceptionally being the best that they be, by putting some of these laws and stuff, and they might not seem strict to you, but, I mean, just coming from the individual, um, actually doing this and stuff like that, it is a burden, because the Health Department's always on it, and I get phone calls all the time, emails all the time, Abshul, like, can you come check my restaurant out, please, make sure, and it's, it's more of a burden and such, too, so, I'm sorry, I'm like...
No, no, I appreciate your comments, and if you would, just make sure you've got your contact on that, so, and I appreciate, I appreciate you being here and for your input on that, so. Anyone else? Again, uh, I'll, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing, and, um, just say again, yeah, I'm guessing counsel may, well, let's just go ahead and get it out of the way, then I'll make my comments. I would like to recommend to counsel that, uh, that a motion be made to table this item, so, um, so that staff can work, uh, based on those comments, and develop something in concert with them, that won't have any unintended consequences.
So moved.
All in favor, to Kate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. I want to thank y'all for making time to be here, um, you know, obviously, this counsel always wants to do what's best for our business and for our community, and, um, so we'll, we'll get something put together that kind of accomplishes what we need to, without being a hindrance on y'all, and again, I do appreciate your input and for coming here and giving us the suggestions, and if you just make sure that your email addresses are on that, uh, so that we can contact and communicate with you, okay?
Uh, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
If I might suggest, you, you might want to just, uh, do a second motion where y'all just withdraw it from the agenda at this point, because if you leave it tabled, it stays on the agenda until such time as y'all take action on it in the future, and you'll have to have two consecutive readings anyway when you do that.
So if we remove it, we can just start over again?
Yes.
I make a motion to remove it from the agenda.
Second.
All in favor, to Kate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Lovell, for that guidance, and again, thank y'all, and like I told those little leaguers earlier, you're certainly welcome to stay and hang out with us, but you're also welcome to go do something else, if you'd like as well, so, don't blame me if you did. All right, next item on the agenda is T-20 dash zero one, HPC Design Standard Revisions, Mr. Hardigre.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Mayor, this is a, uh, second reading for the, this text amendment to the design standards. We started this process about a, a year and a half ago, uh, to address concerns expressed by counsel and by HPC about some vagueness and inconsistencies in the, uh, design standards. Uh, we expect this to be the first step and, and multiple steps to bring the design standards up to, uh, or at least bring them up, uh, update those, so that it's something that we can use, uh, going forward. Nothing's been updated on the design standards since they've been implemented for, uh, ten years or so, eight to ten years, depending on when the, uh, districts were adopted. There are no content changes to, uh, to these text amendments, uh, with the exception of the painted brick, uh, with the exception of the painted brick, which you asked us to address, and, and that, uh, content change brings the residential, uh, ordinance into compliance with the, with, or with the downtown, uh, business district ordinance, uh, so there's no discrepancies there. We've also aligned the four different residential districts, uh, all the same text, so there's no difference between the four residential districts. Uh, and with that, we've also been able to, or try to take some of the gray out of the language, uh, to make it more black and white, make the HPC decisions more defensible, and at the same time, also make it more clear to the applicants what that, what's expected of them, and if there is a hardship, that hardship can be defined, and through the variance process with the HPC, they could address any kind of hardships, uh, of, um, with those design standards. There's been no changes since the, the first reading, the state shipo office did review the changes, we did incorporate their recommendations where it was appropriate, uh, HPC did approve these changes at, at the December meeting, so now we're just, uh, waiting to see which way coun, counsel goes with the, uh, the text amendment.
And these are mostly, or these are all administrative changes, or just wording changes, or there's not any substantive...
That's correct, it's mostly, it's all grammatical changes, no content changes, with the exception of the painted brick.
Thank you.
And the largest change is that we're gonna have one guideline for all districts, right?
We'll have one guideline for all residential districts, and then the downtown district has its own separate, because of the storefront, the language is a little different, but none of that's changed right now.
Gotcha.
Okay, any discussion? If not...
A public hearing.
Oh, public hearing, yeah, I've only gotten told three times, and I have a note right here to do that, so, evidently it takes four this evening. Uh, I will open up a public hearing relative to these, uh, design standard revisions. Anybody wishing to step forward, speak for or against, may do so at this time. And seeing none, I will close the public hearing on T-20 dash zero one, and now turn that over to counsel for consideration.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, to Kate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Uh, we move on to, uh, Mr. Menino, you've got the next few here.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and counsel, uh, we're requesting consent to demolish the structure at Twelve Aubrey Street, uh, the city has condemned that property, um, due to several, several reasons, some, substandard, and it's unsanitary, and several other reasons. It did, um, go to court, there was a court order for the owner of the property to either approve it or demolish it, uh, they were given ninety days from an October date, that did not occur, um, we do, we are dealing with an out-of-town owner, and with that, we are requesting your consent to go ahead and have it removed.
Okay, questions for Randy on this?
Did I understand in the work session, work session, that the owner, that they want it torn down?
Yes, they were gonna have it torn down themselves, said they would, I believe they told the court they would, and, uh, then contacted code enforcement, saying, no, we can't, we can't afford to do it.
Any other questions or discussion? If not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Seven. All in favor, to Kate, by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, like, so?
Sorry.
That's okay, motion carries unanimously, next item, Randy.
Part two of this request, uh, was pending on your approval to consent to, um, allow this to be demolished. We did solicit bids, uh, for that demolition, uh, the low bid was eight thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars from A&amp;M Contracting, and we would requi, respectfully request you to grant this bid to A&amp;M Contracting. There is a process that's built in, there will be liens placed on this property for an attempt for the city to recruit, recoup, uh, the funds that are expended, uh, by the city to have it removed.
Okay, questions, comments, or motions on that?
Is there any amounts of money that it cost us to put the lien on and everything? Is that all encompassed there?
That, that will be added to the eventual cost, um, I believe it cost about seventy-five dollars for us to record the lien...
Yeah, they...
And file it, uh, with the court, and basically what the process is, is we file it on the real estate records, um, we also give it to the tax assessor's office. So if somebody actually buys that piece of property, assuming they have a closing attorney who does the title for them, they will require them to pay off our lien before they allow them to purchase that property, or if the property ever is sold for taxes at courthouse steps, the county will add the amount of our lien to the amount of delinquent taxes they have, that somebody would have to bid on that amount, total amount, to actually win that property.
The actual court order does allow us, uh, to recoup all costs associated with this.
Include any attorney fees?
Yes.
Okay. Feel great about it. I make a motion to approve. You're great for that.
Got a motion, a second, anybody else want to have any discussion on that, or we good? All right. All in favor, to keep by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Not so fast, Mr. Menino, you're up again.
Yeah. I misplaced my agenda. I'm going to assume the next one is the pub crawl ordinance.
I made sure that Frank was standing by the door, so you didn't try to run out.
That's right. At council's last meeting, they instructed Keith to put together an ordinance based on individuals coming to council meeting and requesting that the city take a look at their current policy regarding pub crawls, which we don't have one. Keith put together some information for that. We were able to do an alcohol control board meeting, special call meeting for them, presented the proposed document and ordinance to them. What this will do is put together a few standards to allow folks that do, that actually host these events, that they would have to follow to do a pub crawl. The alcohol control board did add a few additional standards that we discussed during the work session, and with that, the alcohol control board did recommend approval of this proposed ordinance five to one.
Okay. Questions for Randy at this time? Thank you, sir.
Mayor, I do believe there are some public speakers on, before they do speak, and they'll probably address it, but I want to let council know that due to the timing of the event, they have requested it be approved as an emergency ordinance reading, because they cannot hold their event with requirements under this ordinance if we do our normal two-reading process. So, if council does decide to approve it, it's listed on the agenda as a first reading, you will actually have to say, "We're approving it as an emergency ordinance," and a proposed reason for the emergency is in paragraph three, which is basically that if you don't approve it, they can't do the pub crawl within the, on the dates and the question that they've asked for. So, you may want to reference that, or if there's another reason that you feel it could be an emergency, you can reference that as well.
So, it'd be appropriate for the council, if a council member were to make a motion to refer to that in their motion as an emergency reading for that reason?
Yes.
I don't need to declare that, but then...
No, no. Whoever makes, if a motion is made, and you want a motion to approve it, to allow them to hold this particular event, as they're going to propose to you in a few seconds, is you would have to approve it as an emergency reading and stating the purpose of your emergency. If you don't do that, it would then just be considered a regular first reading, and they would be able to do what they want to do, if that's what y'all want to do. That all make sense?
It does.
Perfectly my idea.
So, that being said, if there are people that here that wish to speak either for or against this particular ordinance, they may step forward and do so at this time. And if not, that's totally fine, too. Going once, going twice.
I guess I'll say that I, I don't really have much to add to the conversation. I think we've had some, some pretty thorough discussion here, but I am available to answer any questions that council might have, based on the board recommendation from the Downtown Development Authority.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lord.
Anyone else? Splendid. I'll close the public hearing portion of this and turn it over to council for consideration.
All right, I'm going to, are we ready for a motion?
Well, I, I would say that it, I don't think it meets the threshold of being an emergency. And I think Lily stated that in the work session, too, that it didn't come from her, I think it's to us, but I don't think it makes that threshold. And I think their planning needs to be better. So, I think we can wait till the fall, we can wait, and we can do that. So, I, I would, I'd say this is a first reading, and I'd not deem that as an emergency.
If there's no other discussion, motion is in order.
I will make a motion to approve the emergency ordinance for the pub crawl event due to timing.
Okay. Got a motion to add a second?
A second.
All right. Got a motion, a second. All in favor, to keep by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign?
No.
Motion carries five to one. Next item is for festival zones, for 2020 events. Ms. Reed.
All right. Hello again. This is our customary annual approval of festival zones for our year's worth of events. That keeps us from having to come back to you month to month as we enter our event season. The festivals are, what we are requesting for festival zone dates are identified in the resolution, and we did submit a map that indicates the areas that would be identified for each of those respective events. And the DDA has also submitted applications to planning and zoning per the festival zone ordinance, which has been approved by the director.
Okay. Any questions or discussion on these ordinance, on these events? And if there are none, a motion's in order.
Make a motion to approve.
All in favor, to keep by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Mr. Hampton, you're up next.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This agenda item basically is a damage release form. January 15th, there was an incident, this year 2020, it was an incident where a driver crashed at 314 West Main, damaging our facilities, breaking a pole, knocked over a transformer, and much other stuff. The, we filed a claim with the insurance company for reimbursement for damages, and we've reached a settlement with them for $7,331.91. So, basically, as a standard with these insurance claims, they ask a damage release form be signed, so that we do not come back later for additional damages. So, what I'm requesting is the authorization for the mayor to sign this property release form or damage release form, and that will enable us to recoup the expenses we had to spend on that repair work.
Okay. Any discussion on this item? If not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, to keep by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Derek. Mr. Porta, you've got a handful of them this evening.
Yes, Mayor. The first one is Advanced Meteoring Program Phase Two. UMS was contracted by the city last year to start the advanced meteoring program. We received proposals this past Tuesday, and working with UMS, like to get this phase two with them approved by city councils, allow them to evaluate the proposals and bring back their suggested to the staff. And hopefully, if the council approves this one this evening, in a few weeks, or a couple of meetings, we'll be able to bring you the dollars associated with that, and see if the city council wants to move forward. This task order 1.2 is, it costs $82,350 and recommend it for your approval.
Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor, to keep by saying aye?
Aye.
Continue on, Dan.
Yes, sir. Roof management damaged the garage door at the library during their redo of the library roof over there. They have sent us a check for the amount of invoices, $5,726.50, and I recommend approval of paying overhead door, garage door company for these repairs.
Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, to keep by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Next one is for the fiber department, a patch management software that we need. It basically allows them to remote into the city computers and patch critical vulnerabilities for us. The cost of this is $7,622.46.
Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, to keep by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Next item is a fiber splicer trailer. We've had a trailer we've had for about 15 years. It was kind of a makeshift. This one is something that's going to be used by the fiber department, and it'll be more in tune for what they need on a daily basis. There is a little change in the price that was in the agenda. They've added a backup camera and one other safety item. The total I'm recommending for approval is $25,245.
Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve.
I'll accept that.
All in favor, to keep by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Next item, Mayor, is the quarterly invoice for the Parkdale County radio systems by, used by multiple departments, and this is $11,520.36.
Questions, comments, or motions?
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor, to keep by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Dan. Hello, Mr. Jones.
Good evening, everyone. We would like to get authorization to purchase a replacement maintenance truck for the wastewater plant. We took sealed bids on the truck February 21st, received five bids from four vendors. The low bid was weighed forward at $126,513 even. Do recommend that for your approval. We have a picture of something very similar to what we would get here for this. We are replacing a 2001 vintage used truck that we bought as an emergency in 2015, so we are, we are needing this truck.
Okay. Very good. Any discussion? If not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
All in favor, to keep by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Ms. Brock, you have the next item.
Yes, Mayor and Council. You all set some goals during our bus meeting session back in January that you all received a couple of weeks ago, and I received feedback. We made those changes based upon your recommendations to those goals, and I would like to ask for your approval, or any discussion you may have, so that we can move forward and make sure those are properly budgeted in the 2021 budget coming up.
Okay. Council, you've had an opportunity to look these over, and, of course, we were there. So, is there any further discussion that needs to be had on that? If there is not, or if there's no discussion we had, chairman want to have a motion to approve these 2020 goals?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, to keep by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Before we have our final item of the evening, I'd like to tell staff, any staff members that are not involved in this final item, you are, you are free to leave. And we appreciate, you know, Tommy, did you just hurt your back standing up so quick?
Except for Mr. Sanders.
My gosh.
He's a character witness.
He moved like Deion Sanders and not Tommy Sanders. This final item of the evening is a alcohol control board decision appeal, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Lovell to talk about the proceedings.
Okay. As council is aware, in December and January, the city of Carterville conducted a sting operation at all the licensed establishments to sell alcohol in the city. I believe either five or six failed at that time. One of those establishments was referred to as Max at 1139 North Tennessee Street. They had a hearing that was scheduled on February 12th before the alcohol control board. At said hearing, they did not appear. The alcohol control board considered all the evidence, which is contained in your package, plus the video showing the actual sale. Part of the evidence was that there was a previous violation at this establishment back in 2017. After reviewing all of that, the alcohol control board made a motion to place a fine of $2,000 for two separate violations of the city of Carterville alcohol control ordinances, and to revoke their license effective February 26, 2020. They were given notice of the decision of the alcohol control board at that point. They do have a right to appeal those decisions to the mayor and council. They have exercised that right to appeal. On page 198 of your agenda package is their actual appeal letter. And what it basically says is, "I apologize for missing the hearing on February 12th. The reason I, I started reading the first paragraph of the letter, which states that it was scheduled for trial on March 9th," and I assume he means he didn't read the rest of it, which indicated the actual date of the hearing. Therefore, the issue that he is appealing is, I guess, his inability to be at the hearing because he misunderstood the date that the hearing was held. So, he's appealing to have a hearing that he can actually attend and present whatever evidence he wishes to, to the alcohol control board, so they can make a decision hearing their side of the story as well. The procedures that govern this is, the applicant shall have the right to be represented by legal counsel. At the hearing, the mayor and city council will receive oral arguments on the written memorandum and the evidence in the record. So, basically, what that means is that he can tell you why they appealed it and why he feels that they should have, their appeal should be granted. The record speaks for itself. We've already given that to y'all. The only thing on the record that you don't have is the video of the cell, which, if y'all wish, Mr. Hartig Green can play that for you. The right to offer an oral argument may be waived, and I will tell you, on behalf of the city, we are waiving an oral argument in this matter. They will make whatever arguments they want. The city will just let the record speak for itself. No additional evidence or arguments shall be permitted at the council meeting, and the council shall base its decision solely on the memorandum, oral arguments, if any, and other evidence in the record. Following the oral arguments in the hearing, and council does have the right to ask questions afterwards of either city staff that was involved, we do have the police officer that conducted the sting present, or Mr. Menino or myself with respect to the alcohol control board hearings actions, though the order does speak to that. Then, the council has the right to sustain the order, overrule the order, or modify the order, however they want. In lieu of a suspension or revocation, the mayor and city council may impose a fine upon any licensees such fine as set forth in this chapter. Those fines at the maximum level were already imposed by the alcohol control board. Y'all can't impose a fine on top of what they have fined them. So, if you feel a fine is appropriate, they've imposed the maximum amount, though you do have the right to lower that if you so wish. And once, or you can remand the case, in other words, send the case back to the alcohol control board for them to conduct a hearing in their normal process, and then their decision will then be made. They will have a right to appeal or not appeal that decision at that time, and go through the normal process, just like we're doing right now. That, that is basically the procedures with respect to it. You do not have to make a decision tonight. You have 30 days in order to make your decision. Therefore, if you do not feel comfortable making the decision tonight, y'all can put it on your next agenda and schedule it. And I'm not, and I believe even the following meeting would be within that 30-day guideline, though I haven't counted those dates to confirm that. That is basically the procedure for the hearing. What I will do first is I'll call them up, swear in whoever's going to be making the presentation for them. Everybody that gives testimony will be sworn in this matter, and they will make whatever statement they would like, and then council can go from there.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Lovell.
Did, you understand? Okay, if you would, step forward. You're going to be representing the story. Okay. If you would, state your name and address for the record.
Fadi Shretta, from Max 1139 North Tennessee Street.
Okay. If you would, please raise your right hand. You do swear affirm the testimony you're about to give in this matter before this city council shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Thank you. At this time, you have the right to inform council why you've made the appeal. Your letter's already part of the record, and ask them what relief you're seeking.
All right. It will, the bill, like, as he's mentioned, we get the letter that he sold to Underage, and I read it, and I thought, "We have a different date." That's why I didn't came to the, to the first hearing. Then, I, I got shocked Friday when she came, and she said, "You didn't, you came to the hearing," and I told her, "Still, we have, like, two more weeks to go." She said, "No, you were supposed to be, like, yesterday." But I missed it, by the, misunderstood the date. That's the only reason I didn't came for the first hearing.
Okay. And I'm sorry, can you tell me your, your name again, please, sir?
Fadi Shretta. Fadi. F-A-D-I.
F-A-R?
F-A-D-I.
F-A-D-I. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And Mayor and Council, I will inform y'all as part of the record before you, on page 179, and page 180 is the notice letter that was given to the establishment, if you want to read that and look at that. And it does, you know, what it does in the first paragraph, it references the trial date for the employee that was sentenced down on the second, second page is, in bold letter is when it tells you your hearing date is, and it, yeah. And it also references that in the ray line up at the top on the first page.
Well, it was, like, confusing, you know, for the, yeah.
I understand. What is their status of selling alcohol right now?
Well, as they have appealed, they are... Well, as they have appealed, they are allowed to continue to sell. If the order is affirmed, their license to sell alcohol would be revoked. If y'all decide to modify it, it could be whatever you want it to be. That is their current status.
Did I see in the previous, I guess, violation, they were just in a few days of being outside of, was it through March 3rd, 2020?
I think it was March 8th, 2020, and the actual violation occurred January 8th, 2020. So, the violation did occur during the probation period they were on, and that's another factor that the Alcohol Control Board would have considered in making their decision.
Well, but just, I think, one thing I think you would also have to consider is that our police department doesn't do this on a weekly or even monthly basis. There's one, two, maybe three times a year, I think, that we'll run these operations. So, to say that it's been a year since they, or almost a year that it's passed.
Three years.
Three years, excuse me. You know, it's not like.
I understand.
Yeah.
And are you just asking for this to be remanded so you can present evidence at the Alcohol Control Board meeting or hearing?
I mean, I don't want to lose the license first thing, you know.
It's unclear as to what you're, what you're asking for. Are you asking us to allow you to go back to the hearing with the Alcohol Board so you can present evidence?
Evidence for what? For like?
For the violation and to say why you should not be, where the penalty should be imposed upon you.
Yeah, well, the guy we hired, he was like having like sickness, and we just hired him for like, we tried to help his family, and I talked to him many time, do not sell to underage and this and this, and he wasn't training to, I was trying to help him out, try to help his family for working, but he just, I mean, he sold to underage. I don't want to lose my business, I don't want to lose my license business, and plus the $2,000 like fine for.
Is he still working for you?
No.
Can I ask the chief a question? Does Chief, you may, does the chief, he schedules?
Let me swear to the chief then. You do swear affirm the testimony you're about to give in this matter pending before this court shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
City Council?
Yes.
I do.
I said court, and he's saying City Council. It's just a reflex.
I'm sorry, Chief. What's around your, is that your, I saw you stamp.
I'm sixty.
Gotcha. But, question here.
I'm old.
In the last three, in the last almost three years, have you guys performed a sting operation at Max?
Yes, we have, and.
Not to get specific, but they've passed all of them until this year, I'm assuming.
The last one, I believe the last one they did, Mayor, you may be the, I thought it was in 2018 they sold.
Sir, we'll call on you when you're ready, okay? Thank you.
I believe it was in 2018. Mayor, do you have those records?
Not on me, no.
Okay.
But you have had, you have checked on them over the last three years?
Yes.
And they didn't violate that particular time?
Well, I was under the impression that they sold last year when we did the operation last year, and I would have to go back and look. Do you know that?
I'm not.
Okay.
No, their previous violation was back in January 31st, 2017.
Okay.
So, if y'all did sting operations, say, at the end of 2017, or in 2018, or before, or in 2019, they would have passed those, if y'all did any.
Well, they failed in 2019 because the buy was made in 2019, but between, in 2018, evidently, we did do stings, and they did not sell. But 2017, then 2019, they did.
I guess what I'm trying to get at is, how often are you in there, and is this a pattern with them? I mean, obviously, they're on probation, we know that.
Yes, sir.
How many times a year do you do these types of operations?
It varies, and I don't like.
You don't want to be specific and tell us what day and time and all.
I don't want to be specific, you know, because there's a lot of factors that go on. I mean, for instance, we could get a complaint from a parent saying, my kid bought beer from a store, and so, we may go check that store, or we may go check all the stores within a small period of time, and it just varies. But we always, always at least do it once a year.
Okay. Thank you. That's all, that's all.
Since I took over, I mean, we haven't sold any alcohol to nobody, to underage. We check ID everybody, but like I just said, this guy, he just speak in English like, and he was like having heart problem, but before, since I took over, we never sold to underage. We always check, no. But we have like, they come like a week, two time a week, to try like to buy alcohol under, to underage, I mean.
Who does?
Like the sheriff or whoever, you know, like.
He just says we do it about a few times a year.
We are not the only agency that does that. There's the Department of Revenue that also, they do their own sting operations, they sometimes inform the City of Cartersville about it, a lot of times, they don't. So, he may be referring to other law enforcement agencies.
And they would be notified that they were tested and passed?
Nope.
So, how would you know? Do other agencies notify them if that they?
The GBI, the Department of Revenue may notify them if they pass their inspections. The Department of Revenue does not always notify us if a violation has occurred.
And we notify them if they pass inspection. We'll write in the letter saying, you were checked and you passed.
Okay, thank you.
That's Officer, Slammer, Slammer.
Do you want to ask what Frank or the other?
Officer is Brennan, sir.
It's Herron.
Herron, sorry.
Okay, if you would, stand up, please raise your right hand. You do swear affirm the testimony you're about to give in this matter pending before this City Council shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, I hope you got it.
I swear.
When the CI went to the establishment and got the strawberry Rita on each occasion, did he actually brandish a under-21 ID, or there was never a request for one at all? Because from the record, it seemed a little inconsistent where the report, it says that he provided ID, they sold to him anyways, and then in the investigative report, it just says that he walked up, bought it, left, came back hour later, hour and a half later or so, walked up, bought it, left. So, which one was?
Throughout the night, so the CI, if the CI was asked, they would provide an under-21 ID, would be their actual ID. On this particular case, the CI did not provide an ID. She wasn't asked, she was never asked for an ID, correct.
Thank you, just want to clarify.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
I have one question, because I don't know who to ask it to, so I'm going to start out with you. How many licenses do you think the City of Cartersville has revoked due to second violation?
Since I've been here?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I am aware of two licenses that were revoked in the late 90s or early 2000s for second violations for that. I will tell you, at the same hearing day, Longhorns, which has a pouring license and not a package license, they were heard by the Alcohol Control Board, they were present, they presented their evidence and their request, and the Alcohol Control Board sentenced them to the same $2,000 fine, and then gave them a 15-day suspension with respect to their ability to sell alcohol on premises, and that suspension, which they accepted, and that suspension is running from, I think it's March 1st through March 15th, if my memory's correct.
I would think something like this would pretty much kill the business, and by having their alcohol license revoked, that's, like a better phrase, the death of heaven, if you would. So, it sounds like they're facing some pretty serious consequences, and that they were not, I guess it wasn't all that clear from the notice letter, even though they stated twice, well, that the hearing date was February 12th, that there was, I could see how there could be some confusion with the.
Because it's listed twice in bold, you can see why there's confusion.
The first paragraph is not addressed, just to that. I would just say that, you know, at least allow them the opportunity to go back in front of the Alcohol Board and.
I'd like, sorry to cut you off, I'd like to see the video of what actually happened in the store, and I, because I know that it's available, I think we all need to look at it, and I also think that, you know, regardless of whoever's condition or whatnot, the person who's the license holder of that business has the responsibility of operating that business, and selling alcohol is a, I mean, it's a privilege, and there's responsibilities that come with it.
David, please hold it for one second. Officer Herron, if you would, describe to the Council what you've seen, because just from the video itself, you may not understand the context of everything. So, anywhere you need to throw in a description, do let them know.
So, in this particular case, we used, we actually used a cell phone which captured the video, and this particular store, our CI went in twice. We had some difficulties with the first buy. She met with us at a pre-arranged location after the first buy, so I don't recall if the video captured him checking an ID the first time, but I don't believe it, I don't believe he did the second time, and I think this is the second time.
You brought the age, you brought the cooperating.
Yes, our cooperating CI is 18, so I believe this video where it starts is only the second buy.
Okay. So, our CI actually come in twice. She came into the. Same day, same night?
Yes, she came into the business, and then approximately seven or eight minutes later, she walked back in.
So, she came first, got to buy your alcohol?
Correct.
And he did a server off?
No, he did.
The first time?
Correct.
And the second time?
She came in and purchased the same alcoholic beverage again, the same kind of alcoholic beverage.
Okay, put the video, please.
Do you have a?
We're going to watch the video, sir, hold on a second, we'll talk about it afterwards, please.
Is there sound?
I think so.
And that's the strawberry Rita, we see that little can with strawberries on it?
Correct.
Okay.
And she actually received a receipt as well that was taken.
And y'all have a copy of that in the package. That's her leaving the store, I think you can stop it at that point, David.
Yeah, at this point, she gets in her vehicle and then meets back up with investigators.
And sir, to answer your question, no evidence was submitted with respect to the first one, because I think there were some video issues with it, so we did not make any charges with respect to the first buy. The officer just telling you that the CI went into the store twice.
Well, in the second time, obviously, if he served her the first time for alcohol, he's not going to ask her for second time for ID. So, if I came to this store, I borrowed a six pack.
Go ahead, step up to the microphone, please, sir, if you don't mind.
If this, the second time she came to the store and he didn't ask her for ID the first time, he's not going to ask for the second time, so I go first time to the store, buy alcohol. If they ask me for ID, I will present the ID. If they didn't ask me for ID, I will come back, because I already bought the first time, so they're not going to ask me for the second.
I don't want to make assumptions, but if she walked in and she gave him an ID that showed that she was 18-years-old, and he sold it to her anyway, then he did that the first time, if that's the reason why he didn't card her the second time.
Do you know what an under-21 George ID looks like?
Yes.
Okay, it looks totally different than someone who's under-21.
Yeah.
So, and I would assume your individuals that work your registers are aware of this, that, right? So, you know, they should flash the 18-year ID, I doubt, you know, it would be, obviously, that would not be valid sale.
Well, I'd like to make, per the law, I think you have to ID every time regardless.
Yes.
So, that, I just wanted to clarify that you got to ID them every time they walk up, not just because you're.
Well, here's, I'm just taking a, kind of a straw poll.
Oh, we did?
Is there, does anybody else have any other questions or need anything else?
Okay. He has the right to make any final remarks before y'all take a vote.
Well, I mean, we tried to not revoke the license, so we can keep up with the business, you know, if we lose our license for alcohol, I mean, it's going to be a problem, and we might go out of business in this location.
Okay.
Mayor, would you, if I may, can I ask you one more question?
Hold on a second, sir, he's got, Councilman steps.
I think it is very important to me to know, what are you doing to make sure stuff like this never happens again? I mean, like, never.
Never. I mean, I ran the business for like five years, I never sold to any underage, never ever. I've been in this business for 10 years, I never sold to underage. I try to tell everybody to check ID for everything, tobacco, cigarette, alcohol. Every day I go to work, I tell my staff to check ID, please, to check ID every single day. Look young or look older, it doesn't matter. So, anybody come, we make sure we're not serving to underage, or he not supposed to have alcohol, he's not 21, or cigarette 21, or tobacco 21. I never did, I tell my staff all the time, but this guy, he just came, just knew from Syrian wherever, and he tried to, I mean, help his family, he got like four children, and he got problem, and I tried to help him, and I talked to him for four hours straight, and every five minute, I mentioned, please do not check ID. Everybody try to buy alcohol, or tobacco, or cigarette, please check ID. And he was in the second day of training.
So, that was the second day of training?
The guy, he was training. He wasn't hired full-time in this store.
So, where was the supervising?
He was out of country, he was.
He wasn't there, so he wasn't being supervised, but he was training?
He was training, yeah, he was in training.
So, this was his first job?
As, yes.
As a clerk, sir?
Yes.
Anyway?
Yes.
So, if you would, please make a final statement, or you, I guess you've already made the final statement?
Yes.
Thank you, all right, thank you for your time. And sir, a couple of times you have offered that you want to speak, if you cared to say something, all right, well, he needs to swear you in.
Raise your right hand. You do swear affirm the testimony you're about to make before the City Council shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do. Yes, I want to say, because I.
Okay, your name, we need your name, sir?
Muhammad Nas.
Thank you.
I'm the manager on that store, and in a seven month, five times they check us. They give the card to me, I, we check the ID. So, lot of times they check it, and I'm afraid, why they, every month they come to check us? I don't know about the problem, but five times we passed that one, and six times, the new guy, he delivered a pizza, it's difficult for him, the boss give the favor, he say, train this guy for the easy job, and we just try to help him, and he saved so much, but the five times in a seven month, we passed that, check it. I just want to tell that.
The only thing I would say back is, again, as the manager and as the license holder, I understand you could say you want to help somebody out.
Yes.
It's still your responsibility to make sure that your store's being run correctly.
Yes, sir.
And when you don't take that responsibility seriously enough, then things like this could happen, and you do put your license at jeopardy.
That's why I want to tell, whenever we check it.
Thank you, I appreciate your comments. I appreciate your comments. Counsel, you have before you options of either sustaining the ruling, overruling it, modifying it or some way, or remanding this back to the Alcohol Control Board and giving them an opportunity to appear before the Alcohol Control Board on a date that hopefully will be in bold three times on the letter so they know what it is.
I would like to make a motion, we remand this back to the Alcohol Control Board. A second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm an aye.
Okay. Then the motion carries unanimously. This item will go back before the Alcohol Control Board.
Meredith, when is the next meeting?
I can get it on, the next one is March 11th if you want.
Uh, yeah, there is, there's not the waiting period. So we'll, sir, step to the podium.
The next meeting will be March, March 11th.
March 11th, 10:00 a.m.
In this room.
Here in this chamber, and you will receive a letter that'll be delivered. Are you in tomorrow, Donna?
Yes.
You'll receive a letter that'll be delivered to your establishment tomorrow telling you to be there for the hearing.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any other business that needs comes for counsel? If there's none, chair, we'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Stay gold.